New matter, 99 Grace Bridge. This is first. Please state your name to the line.
John Milan, Chris Milan, architecture, representing Tracy Calvin and Gordon Perry.
And I saw that the cars already got on submission, so you made the proper notifications.
So, we are here today for a few variances. There's a coverage of the FAR variance, but there's also a certain variance for a nursing unit that is in the upper part of the side guard bumper.
Can you show us that because we couldn't find it?
So, this pad right here.
What time is that?
Twelve, zero twelve. So, the project to enlarge the house, it's a very small asset. If you guys know, the aqueduct is pressed right up because the majority of the house is already in the upper part of the house. Our strategy for adding one to the house to provide, you know, a massive complement perhaps for veterans, we just sort of just enlarged the house to make it more typical and a second option, was to do that addition in the old area of the property that is outside of the upper part. So, this area here, this was in the upper part of the rest of the property is here. And so, you know, our strategy to add on was in this area to try to eliminate any impact on the
And the reason why you're here is because the property
There's a little, this barn is being renovated and it's being heated by a heat pump, which is an electric heat pump. And so, what we're proposing to do is locate this, if you guys are familiar with these, the condensers, it's the Mitsubishi type condenser. It's not like a big air conditioning condenser. It's much like the ones that are outside this building. There's one in the front of this building. So, the location for that is within the buffers and this pad, this location right here, there's a path, a slope here, an entrance here, and a parking area here. This is within the rear yard buffer, which is visible approach from the aqueduct. This area, we felt we could plant and hide, you know, given the size of this thing and the fact that this has already developed as far as the impact was minimal. And this is the, there's an existing staircase down to the building that we're going to use here, so we could really use this corner. There's a slope here, we can use here, there's a door here, and then that one, rear yard buffer. This is actually the aqueduct, so we can't. So, this is the area that we want to propose.
Well, I heard you from a visual point of view, but how about from a noise point of view?
These aren't like a normal condenser. They're very, they're very low impact on the noise.
Can you be more specific about that daily specs?
We could, we could provide specs, but in terms, like I say, if a standard condenser was like a 56 dB, this is more like a 40 dB. So, it's like, it's like the conversation we're having here at the max. It's like a low level conversation. It's considered, it's considered
There's no other place that can easily be stopped.
Right. Yeah, I think, I think that if we located this here or, you know, outside of the buffer, in this area on the side of the building, there wouldn't be a huge differential in noise impact. If we could locate it along this wall, it might be, but again, because of the way the grade is working, the entry to the building is in that area.
I could just say there wouldn't be a change in the impact where it's there. How many figures would be if you come over to the front or on this side of the structure?
No, there would be some. I'm just saying, I think the level of this is already so low, is what I'm saying. I don't, I don't think it's like a huge differential given to any.
I respect your opinion, but I don't want to sign the data on it. And, you know, you're going right along with the buffer. That's a big difference.
I have to say, I have two of those units at my home here, my home on Cape Cod, and I have to say, I don't even really notice when they're on.
You're, sorry.
I have two of them on Cape Cod, and I have to say, I don't even really notice when they're on. They are very quiet, much, 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 much quieter than a traditional condenser.
They're all smaller and, you know, they're small. So, the visual impact is less, the ability to plant against them, they actually have a tighter, you know, the awesome that's required for the house, the way to stand up.
Again, why can't we place it in places not close to the buffer like that? Tell me why, again.
It has to do with the limitations around the building. So, this is the rear yard buffer right here. So, everything on this side of the building, we figured we shouldn't, we shouldn't be putting in a rear yard buffer because then it would be both in the rear yard and the side yard and the
How many feet are you from the, from the property line? Where it is now?
The condenser could be held tight here, so it would be approximately 15 feet from the, from the
From the wall?
Yeah. You know, so this pad is also shown a little bit oversized. We just want to make sure that, you know, in the end, what we're showing is a three by six pad there. I would put, for instance, with this thing is really
It's not the pad. Sorry? Yeah, yeah. It's the noise of rest.
Yeah, to Arty's point, I think physically, eating the buffer, I don't have a problem with that, but I think he's asking appropriate questions about the noise.
Right. And I don't know much about the noise. I agree with you said as a professional, but I'm just concerned that it gets approved, it gets placed there, and it's noisy, and we all think it's going to be. And people walk in there, not going to be very happy with us. Right. I mean, are you sure? There's no other place. Is it standing, is it, is it standing against the building?
He's pretty much right. He's pretty much right. And again, we have this kind of configuration. It would be right
Where's, I'm looking at the, the diaphragm though. So, where's, that's the garage, is there?
Yeah. It's a, it's a bar.
Right. I've been there a while back. So, where's the wall? Where's the outside wall of the bar?
Right there. So, that's the outside wall.
Actually, the bar's to the left of it, I see. And what's wrong with the side of office of the aqueduct?
This side, there's an existing path and a slope. And then this, if you go inside, this is a parking area that goes right up to the edge of the barn. It's very, very tight that you can't even get a car around it. So, if we put it alongside this building, we'd take it ahead, but there would be no way to protect it because of the tightness of the, of the driveway area. That driveway is big enough. Right now, what happens with this driveway is people actually force it back up or maybe like certain things. Just to confirm for me, it's, it's here, right? This is it right here?
Yes. And again, why can't you believe where the slope is?
The slope, uh, which would be The main door to the building is located right there. So, yeah, so we were trying to The main door to the building is located there. So, we were trying to, you know, make sure that we You couldn't build up this slope and provide a, you could grade for that. It would still
Yeah, but it's not on the
Right. It would potentially reduce the noise. It would potentially reduce the noise because here, you know, you're blocking noise from this side of the building away. But if it's not from this side here, you would potentially be blocking noise from right here.
Right.
This is what you're worried about, right?
So, you put it on the, is that the heat side right?
Yeah, that's, I think that's what you're saying.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think jam it in there. But when you do a nice job, you don't want to jam it in there, but I'm just troubled by
We could
If somebody was just sitting there that was not going to make noise, I, you know, I mean, so keep trying, you can put some pushing, brushes around it through that. Again, I don't know what the noise thing's going to be. It's like a conversation, I said, people walk back there. It's supposed to be very quiet, and here is constant conversation type noise as well. So, I think it's a big intrusion.
That's all. So, I mean, I think if your thought is if we can put the same unit here, it's still in the buffer, but at least it's behind the building.
That deals with the issue that I
Yeah, that deals with
That deals with the issue for me.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. Next. What's the next issue?
So, then beyond, beyond that, we're requesting, I think, if they are in coverage, they are in Their coverage. So, the coverage request is
10 points?
Probably 10, approximately 10% above
A little more.
And then
6.7, I think.
Yeah. And so, we've, we've done our best to squeeze down the coverage, we're eliminating our rear patio. We've gone through the plan of the house, if that's helpful, in terms of how tight we've tried to make the house. And then we have a zoning analysis here that shows that the coverage request, the request is not typical yet for labor. Which, in fact, that is part of office 13. So, again, the lot is a very Do look at the
The lot we have?
There's one. Three aisles.
We're at it here. So, the, you know, the coverage calculations of the adjacent lots, we have, there are only, there are basically only three lots that are 100% or below level. So, the rest of the sample are all over level with our request. There's only, of the three, so the three that aren't that are needing their requests are Which ones these are? It's G, H, and I. So, I is a new building, a large lot. H is on a relatively large, I feel, but I'm relatively large. Everything else in our sample, it seems, the coverage is, some of them seem heading out. We have covers of around 179, a lot of them around 150, a lot of 1887. So, in terms of the, the impact of the amount of coverage on the lot, we don't think that's a huge impact on so any of the impervious. We are, we are treating the impervious surface, so we're treating all the stumbor, the impact that would be associated with that coverage. We're laying down all of the roofs on the building, just dump off onto the ground, and there is no control run off. So, in addition to the new area of the, of the addition, which is, we're only required to treat the impervious surface. In addition to that, we're treating the barn, impervious surface, that we're, you know, we're treating more than what we could typically do. So, in terms of the impact of the coverage, if you're worried about environmental impact of the coverage, we're actually making additions into the
So, why isn't that? You can't build within what you can, as a matter of fact, you need this 10%?
So, we should go through the plan. I mean, we, we have tried to keep the proposed plan very tight. This is the existing building. So, just, you know
So, you're not doing anything to the barn? This is just the structure?
This is just the structure.
Okay.
The, the living room is a one-story portion. On the, on the two-story portion of the building, you see there's a bedroom on the lower level. There's not really a public stair. There's only a spiral stair in the building right now. This is a five-foot spiral stairs, so you can't really push up and down. It's a high stair, this is a tight engineer, they have a closet, a small dining room that kind of like fit a four person around the table. So, in terms of what this, this house was, it's more like a one below sized house. On the second level, there are bedrooms that have, you know, minimal closets and a shared bathroom. Right? So, this, again, these are like 10 foot by 80 foot runs. They're smaller. So, the approach that we have is trying to get it to the, you know, the, the status of a, sort of a typical house in the area or something. It's going to be smaller than what's adjacent to it. But what we, but what we provided is the space that's associated, this is a new stair and entryway for the building.
So, the big thing is you had a really spiral stair.
Yeah, we're, the spiral stair. Now, this becomes a entryway with a closet, the stair. The space associated with the stairs is about 130 square feet to get an entry in the stair on each level, so that
Referral to the stairs and people
And then this over here is a, a walk-in long suite that's on this bedroom on the second level. It's basically a master suite. But if you look in terms of what kind of master suite this is, it doesn't include a walk-in closet. It includes, you know, sort of two
It's tragic.
You know, but it's just, it's more like, it isn't an extravagant amount, and we sort of pushed it to what would be minimum for the, for the investment. So, the coverage, you know, and so there's two points. We don't feel like we have pressed it. And in order to hit, you know, the coverage amount that would be by right, you'd have to take 300 square feet out of the building. You know, 300 square feet is the addition at that point. So, that's really what's driving it. On the FAR level, again, we're asking pretty much, it's a 6% variance.
5.6, actually.
So, do we got it for you?
Yeah.
But again, in terms of
I'm sorry before I can.
In terms of it's, you know, relationship to the FARs that we're seeing elsewhere, about 50% of the FARs in the sample that we're showing, the adjacent properties are much higher. And the analysis that we did, that the FAR is very conservative, so again, what we've done to show notes, but in general, we've treated these FARs. If we haven't put in the house, we can't confirm with the attic, which is very tight and finished, we're doing the attic at zero. So, some of these FARs may be even higher than what you know it is. We try to make it very conservative.
Any questions for anyone out there?
So, it's 5.6 on FAR and on coverage?
It's 10. Last month, this is from We're always interested, but
What is that?
Noise. Well, my neighbor has a little story, it's very quiet.
What is that called?
Testimony. We can have a place, someplace else. Oh, yeah, that's, I think. It's my
You can do it under the side of that house. Still in the buffer, right?
John, John, I just wanted to talk about the parking so that they understand. It's the parking The parking, my name is Tracy Calvin Meyer, not in that Grace Bridge. The parking is really pretty luxurious as it is. Sometimes we back up the driveway, which is a longer driveway, and during the winter, that's kind of scary. The, we're getting used to it, but I'm very hesitant about putting air conditioning unit near it. And that is one of the
So, the one area that already identified is the area that's off the driveway. So, the driveway is limited from here to here, so it would be a little, this is the only area that
You're following something like that, or something to protect if you weren't about taking it out? Well, we haven't fully explored it, they just
Yeah.
And if you came back and said it's not feasible to put anywhere else, that would be your response. But I also think that you want to move this application along. And I don't know how we're going to treat this now. Are you making a representation that we're not going to play it where you represented it now?
We can, we can mark it with a plan right now and indicate where the, where the relocation isn't good.
Just that you
Oh, yes.
What about the planning board? They have to look at that, don't they?
We're submitting to the planning board tomorrow, so we can make that revision.
So, if you do that, and we, like I guess I said, you can do that, something to the place where it's cool. Right? Does that sound fair?
Just leave it up to COG. Right. Yeah, that's fine. They won't, I don't know. They'll be happy with that location, so you say.
The new location you're suggesting?
Yeah. I mean, as long as, you know, the coverage, the coverage request that we're requesting includes that pad. So, to relocate the pad, we show the same size, it's the way that it does it.
So, would you, would you mark up the plant that shows the 12 times?
Right. I don't know. I'll mark what
Yeah, I think so. Are we okay with the, with the other variance?
I mean, I'm okay with the other one. I don't know if anybody else has any comments. Yeah, I think that on the coverage, it's the way you redone the home and the stair will open it up a little bit. I think that helps quite a bit to increase the coverage then, so.
The numbers are low enough.
Yes.
And it's a reason for it, so it's like you don't get to
I'm comfortable because of the comparable data too. Until I looked at the comparable data, I'm thinking 10% is, you know, if 15%, I'd say no. If it's 6%, I say yes, but the 10% was kind of ambivalent until I looked at the comparisons. You've got four or five houses that are substantially above that.
But the other, I think the other test is whether you can achieve some result with a minimal variance, right? And
That's a, that's a retarded
Right. And I know that you've explained that at least to my satisfaction, so I'm okay with that. But just on the, on the unit.
Do you want me to, I have a flat drawing, like, that's not connected to other cars. I can just mark it up on the one.
Right. Sure. You're going to take it with you?
I'll take it with us.
With us? Me? You're part of the record, I guess.
The test, can you draw or you Earl can still draw.
We don't need to rush you if you wanted to either do this while going to the next, or if you wanted to come back next time, or whatever you wanted to do. Where works we at?
No, this is what we would be agreeing to, to be located to here. I think we can find that and make that look intentional. I think it's, I think it's a fine solution.
Would there be a possibility of without blindness to finding out, if we found out, for instance, there is zero deep, what is it, DBA?
It's not going to be, it's going to be, I think it's 40
From five feet away, or whatever DVA you require, because that's kind of
I would, just to speak for myself, I would think that it is so sacred back there. This village is not the aqueduct and the other longways and things of the sort. And I really would not want to be the one who's improving any kind of noise that increases it. If there's another way of doing it that doesn't impact on the aqueduct, and that's, that's the vote here. If you told us there's no other way to do it, this is the only place you can do it, and without it, you can't use your home, or this or that, and it'd be different consideration. But I think there's other ways that are less intrusive and maybe more feasible.
You know, there's, there's a way to do it also on where we could, we could show a small fence, even like a tight fence that was painted to match the barn, so it's almost corralled and, you know, I think, I think there's a way that
We can make that number very special. This cuts into the door.
No, it should fit.
Yeah.
You see, it would be underneath, be right in the sun here.
Okay, we've, we've made that door wider, but
Right. It's certainly right in that.
So, and when you say contribute, is that if we found out that actually something may be A level, you know, five or something from three feet away?
I don't know what those
So, I guess what we can say to you is if you don't, you can come back and show us what you want to show us, and we can rule on that, or we can rule on this today. See the one.
And this is also like, I think we could go forward this way, and if we want to come back for a site plan modification, we can do that. They would send this back here, and now it'll be the same.
Like, there's always a way. And we'll work with you. If you came back and said, even though we don't, we don't want to vote on variances, you know, one after another, if you came back and said, we can't do this, and you demonstrate why you can't do it, then I think we'd be looking to come back and work with you next session. So, that would upset your plan.
I think
Yeah, that's going to be noise, you know. Well, here's the structure here.
Right.
And our purpose is here, it's from the ceiling, we're never thinking about
Well, this is, this is, that's the old, that's the building, so it's behind the building, this is the wall, right? I think what, this may be a little bit further away from the store, and you get a lot of benefit.
What's going on? Just the structure? It's still behind the tiny wall. It's just going to lock, it's just going to lock this door, it's just going to
It's, it would be, this would be at the height of the retanglement, and the bottom of this, you know, would be at the height of the
This way is sound, probably this way is loud.
No, the wall is pretty high, as I know, it's to the, you see the height of the basement? Yep. So, if we look, it would be behind, behind everything or, it won't be this high on the area, because the top of the condenser would be almost level with the top of the wall. Because we have to level
If it's located where you showed
Couldn't you excavate it and drop it down?
Right. That's why I'm saying, you level, you level the gray.
But this retaining wall won't work.
No, 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 not that one.
Oh, that?
That one.
Okay, you're right, she's right.
This is the one that you're looking at, and this is the one that
I'm sorry. I thought that there wasn't
Right, so here you would have a retanglement full height of the unit, and the unit would be at per view based on that, and then you could plant this. We could plant that.
So, it would be below
Yeah. It didn't sound invisible.
Below ground, if you had to, you'd excavate.
You've got to just level on the gray pretty much.
Yeah, that would actually work better.
So you're going to mark that with us?
I want to specifically, I want to see where on the plan.
So Arty is saying is this retaining wall here is actually high enough to block it if you look at it here. So, and what Arty's saying is we would excavate, you had to drop, you had to just drop the pad down.
So it's on, it's on the other side of the stair, basically.
So then instead of doing this location.
Okay.
So what's that, they don't want it, they don't want to have five doors, I can understand.
Right, and then you could plant this next door.
But how does that deal with the noise? Because it's going to be further back.
It's going to be that much farther back from the aqueduct. It's going to be another.
The aqueduct is right here.
Another fifteen at least.
Well, the, the DVA reduction goes, it's actually an exponential reduction, so it really comes off with a good reference.
So you're right, if you're saying like, the aqueduct pad is actually over here, so Arty's point, if you were like, you know, the aqueduct property is to this point, it would be close to this, this puts it back.
And it would be here.
It would be, right, we'll be level the gray behind that tall wall.
So where's your mind? I guess I thought the same. So before you talked about the, the, the.
It was on the other, farther down on that side of the building.
So if you want to mark it a little closer, that would be. And we understand, God, some reason it doesn't work, and we can come back next, uh.
Yeah.
Right?
Yep.
I'm taking an expedited basis.
Well, you know, you're going to prove it as marked up.
Correct. Subject to the planning board approval and subject to him being able to be accomplished.
Right.
We can say we practically noticed it again, but we're going to write a letter designer.
I agree.
It'll be, it's going to be subject to the.
Right.
The, the plan.
Yeah.
All the location is designated on, right, marked up on how much we'll keep. Should use a pencil. There any comments for anyone? You want from the, uh. So based on that, um, I would make a mention to accept the, uh, application from the four variances. Despite modification of the location of the pad, has marked on the revised eight dash zero point two.
Is that right?
Am I right?
Don't want to.
Could you initial that for us, though? We'll make a file of the record and, uh. Eight dash zero point one two.
Great, thank you.
You'll initial one data?
Body of the.
Do you have your name?
No, we have your name.
My name's Claudia Schreit.
And who are you, Claudia Schreit? Okay. It's not sure if that is something.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
We're going to vote.
Vote. My motion as I just described it?
Second.
Second?
Yes.
So we're going to, second, yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So just so you know, so the email that we got says, uh, the zoning board can ignore that, this is from Sarah in the office, that we can ignore that item since the applicant knows he won't be heard. I'm expecting his admission in for November.
Okay.
Having said that, happy to listen and, you know, and do.
If we use the pre-read, that would be super helpful.
Yep.
As a care.
Go ahead.
And just so everyone up here knows, I'm not, I don't take notes, I don't reflect notes, I'm just an advisory.
So we're just, we're just going to listen, call you and try to be helpful.
And I was not here at the last meeting, so I don't know what the application's about.
The, the, the other thing, I mean, from my perspective, we must share our thoughts, but.
Yep.
From my, anything that I say shouldn't be interpreted as a condition. When we see the final.
Well, I think, like, those are all of us.
Yeah, 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 absolutely.
I know, I know.
No expectation.
My name's Kevin Terrence, I'm the homeowner at Torrey Madison Park. Uh, this is General Associates, my architect at, um, this is working this. So we live just, take a right, walk through the gate, and hit our house at the end there. So, uh, what we, we were here last month and we, um, are proposing to, you've got an existing open sunroom that wants to close, and you're looking to put a patio back here. And, um, when we were here last time, uh, we had to break it down and clean the board at that point. Uh, and we come back next month, we will not need to request a FAR variance, because we actually miscalculated it. We do the basement we shouldn't have, so we're way in the gap. Um, feedback you guys gave, which is really good, was that we were, uh, we purchased the home and April moved in in July. And so as it is, it is over ground coverage area by a lot. And so feedback was, hey, if you want to do this, you need to find and give some area back. So, and again, I won't waste a lot of your time here, but basically, we've got a plan here to give you back what we're. So in essence, with the pad and this patio, goodness, we're getting rid of a lot of slate block in the back here that we simply don't need, um, in a couple of different areas. And so when we come back, right, and submit the plans and all, we're going to come back and, um, and, and decrease the ground coverage area by.
So was the original application, FAR and coverage?
It was.
It was supposed to.
Because we miscalculated.
Right, so FAR is no longer applicable.
Right.
Right? And, and that's that you're dropping the coverage, but because you're still non-performing, you have to come back and see us.
Yep.
And you're switching out equal coverage, so for instance.
That's correct.
You're not, you know, taking out a patio and adding a building, right? This is all add gray.
It's all walkways, plate that we had determined, that there's, unless we don't, you don't need that for the patio, so. So that's kind of the story, there's really not much.
Something more?
Probably to do, but just to pre-read that, um, you know, took the feedback, applied it, and hopefully next time we can get it set on time and, um, and do that, so.
I think you've certainly responded to our concern, notwithstanding my prior comment.
Yes, you did, and I.
I, I agree. It shouldn't, well.
We can't cook anything, obviously.
That's what we asked you to do, yeah, yeah, that's what we asked you to do.
Very good, I appreciate it.
Okay?
Great.